Okay, it's 6:32. We will start the meeting. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Let's vote, open the voting.
Um, yes, Mary, I don't see the vote.
It just popped up, I think.
Popped up, Alex.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay, great.
Um, and so, okay, great.
I was having issues, but it's good now.
We have five yeses and Yorgos and Jordana are absent.
Right.
Great. Okay, now that the meeting's open, will everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Just gonna stop my video to stand up. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to section three of our agenda, public input number one. Anyone who's here from the public for public input number one, now would be the time to share a position, a thought, an idea, or ask a question. I just need you to state your name, not your address, and you have three minutes. Is there anybody here? You could raise your hand, and Mr. Fisher will unmute you.
Yeah, we have two so far. So right now, we have Kevin Martin.
Okay.
Sure, hi Kevin.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have a two-part question, if that's okay. The first part, um, the school pays the park approximately $211,000 a year. I'd like to know where that money goes. And the second part to that question is, since March of last year, when the school was shut down, the park has still received $185,000 approximately from the school. Is that money in escrow, or where did that money go?
Sure, so we can look into that, Kevin. Um, we're gonna have the, we received several emails regarding the park today. Uh, that is gonna be scheduled for our next Board of Education meeting as a discussion. Uh, and at that point, we will have those facts and figures for you. We just don't have those off the top of our head, since that wasn't on plan for this evening, but we will be addressing those at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, next up, we have one here, it says Heather Hartstein.
Great.
Heather, you're muted?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Hold on. Okay, good evening, everybody. Heather Hartstein, uh, forget what, you don't need to dress. What else do you need?
That's it, just your name, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm trying to be able to hear, and I can't. Um, so I wanted to know whether or not the board received my letter. Um, I got confirmation from Sandy as well as from Brian. Thank you for responding. I also know that lots of other letters were sent in reference to the same issue, which is the district's decision to not participate in high-risk sports last board meeting. My husband and I had an hour-long meeting with Jeff Nichols. As you know, as are we aware, the, the people in the community, the kids in the community, letters, petitions, et cetera. I'm wondering, oh, how that is going to be addressed to the public directly this evening?
Sure, Mr. Nichols can address. If you have, is there a question, or is it in response?
Well, the question, I guess the question is, will the board be reconsidering their position on high-risk sports?
The board would, would not be. That's an administrative decision, uh, and it's not on the agenda for this evening, but Mr. Nichols can address that.
The board will not, it's not even on the agenda to be discussed by the board this evening?
It is not on the agenda, correct.
So can I have a direct answer from, from you, um, Mr. D, is it DeSessa, DeSessa?
It's DeSessa.
DeSessa. Mr. DeSessa, did you receive my letter?
I did.
Did you receive a lot of letters?
The whole board did, yes.
Okay. How could the board receive this much information on a topic and not make it imperative to be discussed at this meeting when the board is fully aware of the timeline that we're all navigating with the sports? How could that be possible?
It's possible. Go ahead, Jeff, and then I'll jump in. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I had planned on providing an update to the board, um, on some, from my perspective, pertinent facts for their consideration that have developed since the last time we spoke, um, which was January 25th, I believe. I can do that now, or I can do that after, um, we conclude public input, uh, which is where it appeared on the agenda, which was an update on interscholastic sports.
Perhaps, since it seems like we have a lot of the community here, um, it would be best if you gave that update now, uh, that may answer some questions, Jeff, and then we can have the public weigh in, um, on their positions or questions.
Sure. Okay, so let me, let me do that. Um, I wanna, um, you know, start with, I don't wanna rehash everything that I, I covered the last meeting, but I, I think since the last meeting, we do have some, some positive news with regard to the seven-day rolling average in Suffolk County. If you recall, at the last meeting, I had noted that, uh, around December 1, 11:30, which was when Section 11 postponed, uh, high-risk sports, the, the seven-day rolling average was 4.2, 4.2%, and on the 24th of January, which was one day prior to when I presented to the board, that seven-day rolling average was 7.6. And as of today, on the Suffolk County website, thankfully, that number has declined to 5.6. So it is on a downward trajectory at this point, which is good news, and we're all happy about that. We know that following, uh, the Christmas vacation, it had spiked up to about 10 or 13% for about a week. As I had mentioned, on the 25th of January, and it has since gone down. Hopefully, we don't see a spike due to the Super Bowl or following February break, uh, but I think that remains, uh, possible. The other significant development, um, that we've been following the last, since the 25th of January, is the development in our country, and the impact, um, for how schools really need to react. Global or broad picture, there are three predominant variants, one from South Africa, one from Brazil, uh, and one from the UK. Uh, the one at this point that's most concerning is the variant from the UK. Preliminary data, and there needs to be more research on it, is that it is 60 to 70% more transmissible, um, than the strain that we've been dealing with all along, and that the mortality rate, uh, again, tentatively is 30, 30 to 40% higher. Um, the CDC has said that that strain in their models will likely be the predominant strain in the United States by the end of March. Um, and I think all of that is pertinent, especially when you consider Dr. Fauci's words, which were, uh, this past week, viruses don't mutate unless they replicate. So if we don't, uh, do our best, uh, to stop replication, to stop transmission of the virus, it's likely that these mutations will continue, and it'll make our job as a country, as a community, uh, more complicated, uh, to really get our, to get this under control. And so that's why in the news, you hear a lot about the race to get uh, as many people vaccinated as quickly as possible, so that these, these mutations don't, uh, take hold. The other significant development, uh, is that the CDC actually, it was ironic, released a position paper the day after our last board meeting on January 26th. And it has some good news, uh, and some bad news, um, as it relates to our discussion tonight. I wouldn't call it bad news, but news worth considering. The, the first, and I'm gonna read directly from the document, quote, "As many schools have reopened for in-person instruction in some parts of the United States, as well as internationally, school-related cases of COVID-19 have been reported, uh, but there has been little evidence that schools have contributed meaningfully to increase community transmission." So that's positive. In other words, schools have done a good job of opening up and limiting virus spread in the school, I believe primarily because of the safety precautions that we put in place. However, following in that same report, again, on January 26th from the CDC, it says, "In contrast to the potentially positive findings on in-person lead learning, the CDC study on transmission at school athletic events offers a cautionary tale." And this is the most pertinent part of the summary. It concluded that during periods of moderate or high COVID-19 community transmission, schools should postpone high-contact sports where masking and physical distancing aren't possible. So the CDC, which is the entity that I trust the most, and no offense to Suffolk County Department of Health or the New York State Government, uh, or the Suffolk County Superintendent's Association, I'm gonna go with what the CDC says, has cautioned schools against doing the very thing, um, that Suffolk County recommended. And I'm gonna conclude with, uh, I guess, a summative statement, which is that to date, we have three key, key pieces to, uh, limiting virus transmission, both in our schools and in the, in the community, and it's not rocket science. It's social distancing is number one. Uh, number two is mask-wearing, and number three is washing your hands. Now, if we were to opt in to high-risk sports, now originally, that was wrestling and basketball, um, but right now, it's been, it's been limited to basketball, because I guess East Hampton, who we combined with for wrestling, is not running it. So let's just talk basketball. Basketball would result in those three key preventive measures being thrown out, because when you play basketball in a competitive game, uh, we can wear masks, but we can't mandate that our opponents wear masks. So mask-wearing's out. Number two, social distancing is out, because when you play basketball, you're certainly closer than within six feet to your opponents and your teammates. And number three, the notion of washing your hands, which really is a preventive measure to, um, limit, uh, the extent to which the virus is transmitted by touching surfaces and then touching your face, that's out, because the basketball is being touched by 10 people at a time, if basketball's being played well in a game. And over the course of the game, certainly more than 10, as, as probably upwards of 20, if you get 10 players from each side into the game. So for me, you know, I, I know this is very, very hard for parents, and I also know that we're the one district that, uh, I believe on Long Island, that has taken this stance, public school. But it continues to remain counterintuitive to me to recommend, in light of the mutant strains that I just talked about, in light of the most recent research from the CDC, in light of what I just talked about, which are the three major recommendations that really haven't changed since last March, to basically say, hey, we, we don't think that we really need to follow that, because we wanna move forward with this, because we know that basketball is important, and sports are important to our kids, which I'm not underestimating. I'm just saying, if we're making a commitment, uh, to the community, um, to keep our children, to keep our staff, uh, to keep the school community safe, then I don't see how I can responsibly say to you, I recommend that we opt into high-end sports, or high-risk sports, rather. So that's my summary.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, Scott, if we can go back, does the board have any questions or comments for Jeff before we turn it back over to the public? Okay. Scott, if you could, uh, go back to anyone who has their hand raised for public comment, they could state their name, and they have three minutes.
Sure, we have a student guest with us tonight, um, Hudson Brendel, he's asked to speak. So Hudson, you can go ahead and unmute your mic. I don't think I need to do anything for you, since you're a panelist.
And we will circle back to Heather Hartstein after, as well.
Okay. So I'd just like to thank, uh, the community and the board to come out on a Monday night and discuss very important issues that have been to the community, and that affects everybody. Um, I would first like to address what Mr. Nichols just said, um, regarding the health risk associated with high-risk sports. And the first thing that I would like to address is that, uh, in this journal, in this study that he's cited for all of us, there is a blatant disclaimer at the very bottom that says, "The finding and conclusions in this report are those of the authors and do not necessarily represent the official position of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention." So while he, uh, while it is some people who are the authors of the CDC, it is not, um, the official position. And I think that's very important, because it's very important where we get our information, when making these types of decisions, uh, and especially when it affects the, uh, community and all the students in it. Furthermore, I'd like to also quote a, uh, a quotation from another, uh, source of information, from the National Federation of State High School Association, which says, "Accumulate evidence of that the majority of sports-related spread of COVID-19 appears to occur from the social contact, from social contact, and not during sports participation." So, uh, you know, this obviously counteracts, uh, Mr. Nichols' point, but I think a more important information, a more important point that we should be getting to, uh, is the information. And, uh, I would like to assume that the information across every school district and, uh, administration is the same. We all have the same information. So the question is, why do we have a different outcome than the 50-plus counties, uh, where the 50, 50-plus districts in our county? Uh, and not even that, the entire United States, because we are the, one of the last states to, uh, to have high-risk sports in our, uh, interstate. And I think there has to be two options. I think there's either something unique about Sag Harbor that is, uh, you know, puts us in a different category, or, uh, the administration thinks that they know better than not only the state, but the Suffolk County representatives and the 50 other districts in our county. I think that this is a very important question, and I also would like to, uh, propose a solution. I think this basketball team, uh, not only the basketball team, but all the high-risk sports athletes are behind us, uh, behind high-risk sports. This, uh, also this community is behind, uh, our, our effort, because we have 700 signatures plus signatures on a petition to have high-risk sports in, in our, uh, in-person. And and I believe that this is a very important topic, because it's, it's not something that is, uh, time, not really something that is, it is time-sensitive, because we only have our game, our first game is tomorrow. And I think that is something that we all have to address in this decision right now.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, if you would like to go first?
Sure. Uh, first of all, Hudson, thanks for, uh, taking the time to articulate your views. I certainly respect your passion, but also the, the amount of time and the leadership that you've shown in trying to advocate for something that you really want to happen. And part of our, uh, what we're trying to encourage in our students, part of our education, is to become responsible citizens and to learn how to advocate and participate. So I wanna start by just commending you for, for everything that you've done. Nice job. You know, you asked a question about, uh, whether or not, um, I think your question was, how could we be, you know, the only school district, and what does that say about ourselves? Do we think we know more than everybody else? I don't consider myself an authority on this issue, uh, any more than, than anybody else, but what I do try to do is to reference, um, what I, what I think is, uh, science with regard to what we know about transmission, and, and to make decisions based on that in the interests, uh, of the health of our community. You know, you did note that the, I think it was the National Federation of High School Athletic Directors, or something like that. You know, I don't, I don't wanna speak to, to where they're coming from, or, or what their thinking is. I also can't speak to what the superintendents are thinking in Suffolk County, or, um, what the county executive and the Suffolk County Department of Health are thinking. All I can do is reference, um, the Centers for Disease Control and other legitimate, um, sources of, um, research on virus transmission, and share that with the Board of Education in the form of a recommendation. And that's, that's pretty much, you know, what I'm doing.
Thanks, Jeff, and I think, um, I think, Hudson, that, um, what, the ideas that you share are important. I know I've considered them, the board has considered them. We're in an unprecedented times where there are both sides of the argument, and both sides bring great merit, in my opinion, and it's a challenging decision to make. What we've done is, the decision was made by our superintendent, and the board supported that decision. It wasn't a vote, or it wasn't, um, anything along those lines. It was based on the information at hand, which unfortunately changes daily. So that's how we got to where we are now, um, and it seems that the recommendation from the superintendent hasn't changed at this point, but we will hear what, what other people have to say, but unfortunately, um, in one way, and fortunately for potentially health and safety, that has been the decision that, that has been made on behalf of the district. And then, one else from the board would like to add anything?
I just had a question. So I was watching the news about like a week or so ago, and I was looking what other, like, districts, uh, were doing. So I was just looking, and I have the screenshot from Manhattan about high-risk sports, and it said like four bullet points, remote, education-only, regular PCR testing, daily health checks, and final PCR test to return to classes. So I was just wondering, is it something maybe like, it might make sense, or based on your recommendations, Jeff, it's better to just leave things as, as they are?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, uh, thanks for that, Yorgos. I don't know if you recall, but I actually brought that, uh, to the Board of Education's attention a week prior, to Manhattan and Great Neck announcing that plan, and had spoken with, uh, our school attorney, and had also forwarded, uh, the Board of Education, uh, their commentary as to some of the concerns related to that. But independent of the, the legal, um, issues associated with that move, uh, I have a, I have some concerns with taking that, um, route, and I'll try to summarize them. So what we'd be doing essentially, if we were to allow, um, students who elected to, uh, play sports, study remotely, is we would be allowing them to, um, opt out, and essentially, the district would be saying to those students, look, we know that what you're choosing to do places you in greater danger, and in, 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 engages the community health, but as a school district, um, we're willing to let you do that. So I think that that philosophically, uh, is not something that a school district should be doing, knowingly placing, uh, the students who are under our charge, uh, in harm's way. So that's my first concern. My second concern with that option is that it creates a pretty slippery slope. So if, in fact, we were to allow, uh, the students who wanted to play basketball, for instance, to go remote in order to play, well, what's to stop us from, um, or how are we supposed to approach the theater people? The, the students who participate in theater coming to us and saying, hey, you know what? We wanna do the school musical, but we wanna do it the way it's always been done, without masks, without social distancing. And then what do we do when students come to us and say, you know what? We wanna go on a school trip to Boston, or to Massachusetts, or whatever, and we're gonna opt out as a condition of our participation? How do you adjudicate that? How do you say yes to the basketball kids, and then no to the theater kids, or no to the kids who wanna go on a school trip? So my, my, I think it's a slippery, slippery slope. And then I'm being a little bit redundant, Yorgos, but I do think that, uh, as an institution in, in the community, we do have an obligation to think about community spread. So if, in fact, we're allowing these students to, to go without the safeguards that we know prevent transmission or greatly reduce transmission of the virus, if we allow them to, to participate and sanction in an environment where that's not present, knowing that that's gonna increase community spread, are we being a responsible entity, uh, or are we not? And my, my take is, we're not. So, uh, that's my take on, on the Manhattan and Great Neck solution.
Brian, could I, um, could I make a comment as well?
Please.
Yeah, and I also just wanna say, I appreciate, I've read all the emails that folks have sent in, and people coming tonight. It seems like there's more people from the public. I think that's great. I think it's particularly great to see a student on here, speaking up, um, and I hope you'll continue to do things like that. But I just wanna express my strong support for Jeff's position. I think all the, the factors that people have talked about, about the basketball program and how valuable that is, um, I appreciate that. I played basketball when I was in high school. I have three kids who are in the district and participate in athletics programs, and I, I know how great they are for mental health, physical, and I know how terrible it is to have that taken away from you during the pandemic. But at the end of the day, we need to be looking out for the whole school district, not just the basketball team. And some of the parents who, who are commenting on, I think it's great that you are, but I would remind you that you were also, some of the same folks were commenting back in August about how important it is to keep school open for, um, in-person learning, um, and our administration has done a phenomenal job with that. They don't get enough credit. People comment on it, but it's, it's been a phenomenal job in the face of, we have a health department that was supposed to be in charge of this, and then just checked out of it after a month and said they couldn't handle it, um, and very difficult decisions that need to be made every day, and we've been open for in-person learning almost the entire year. I also don't think people realize how precarious that is, and how many weeks there are that we almost have to shut down. Basketball is high-risk for a reason. It's because all of the things you do on the basketball court, being close contact with others, breathing on other people, breathing heavily, sweating indoors, long period of time, are all the high-risk factors. And so to play basketball and risk having to shut the school down is not a good decision. And I, I agree with Jeff, when we're in the middle of the pandemic, we also need to consider the impact on the whole community. This is, we've been in this a year, we gotta wear these stupid masks every day, we have all these restrictions, and in spite of that, 450,000 people are dead in this country, and we have a hospital, and my understanding that is full right now. And so, for all those reasons, um, I support Jeff's decision. I would also note, we may be alone in Suffolk County, we are not alone in the state, there are a lot of school districts in the Albany area and upstate who have lower transmission than us, and have made a decision not to play basketball. So I just wanna express that support, and I also agree that going remote and taking a teacher away from the other kids who are not on the basketball team, as well as sending a message that, um, that athletics trumps student health or academics is, is not the right decision.
Anyone else on the board?
There's a few questions I wanted to tee up, that I think would be helpful and might be part of the consideration of, of why we're going in the direction that we're going in. And I think these are probably for the superintendent. One is, if, if we decided to follow suit like other districts, where the student athletes are quarantining at home while going and playing these sports, would we have to consider that that would be a condition for not only them, but for their siblings, if their siblings attend school in the district?
The answer to that question would be, in principle, yes.
All right. And then, who else in the, in the process might be considered to be high-risk, high exposure if we did? All right. And then who else in the, in the process might be considered to be high risk, high exposure if we did high risk sports? And then they would potentially have to be remote as well. Would, do we have instructors who are now in school that would have to be remote? Or the bus drivers or scorekeepers or security, like, you know, what does that look like? Because right now, I mean, at least previous years, you have your in-school personnel who are also participating and facilitating these sports. It's not just the coach and the player, correct?
Correct. So you would, you know, if you were taking a prudent course of action and recognizing that that atmosphere is likely to have the virus spread and you wanted to be careful, again prudent and keep people in that environment away from the broader or general population, then that would include coaches, that would include scorekeepers, which are usually school personnel, that would include security guard, although there's a question as to whether or not you would need the security guard if in fact there was, there were no audience members. So I think you're looking really at the coaches, some of whom are teachers or many of whom are teachers. You're looking at the scorekeepers, which are usually school staff. You're looking at the athletic director who's usually present.
And, and bus drivers potentially?
Yes. Good point. Bus drivers for away competitions. Yes.
And, and you know, too, I think built on Alex's point, on any given day, we're kind of band-aiding to have enough staff, whether it be bus drivers or the or instructors or other staff to make sure we can stay open for all the student population. So anything that adds a risk of us not having enough means on any given day, we may have to shut school down for everybody else. And that has to be, you know, consideration in the process.
All good points.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else on the board or I'd ask Mr. Fisher to turn to the next to hand raised?
Hudson wanted to say something else. Is that allowed?
Sure.
Hi, um, I think you guys bring up a lot of good points, but I would just like to address some of them. For one, I would like to talk about Mr. Nichols' comment about, you know, what do you say to people who want to have a, you know, a play and a high school play and, you know, this time. And I think that's a very important question. I would like to kind of flip the question on him and kind of point out that we had a theater program going and we've had plays and we've had indoor activities in the school before. And I think it's kind of important to say, well, if these guys could do it and they came to you guys and they came to the board with alterations and, and solutions, potential solutions, and you guys had a dialogue and you guys came to an understanding. I think that's really important. I think that's what we're trying to do here. And I think that we are trying to come to you with not absolute yes, it's not absolute no, but something in the middle that allows us to have basketball, maybe not in a traditional sense, but in some way to, you know, comfort the student body and and I would also like to address another point of it is that students and especially teenage teenagers are prone socially. They're going to find social interaction no, no matter where they go. And I think as a time like this, we're also really desperate of that as well. And I think that having a safe, a safe, appropriate environment to have social interaction, which is a basketball team is really what it is. It's a, it's an organized social event. And I think that that could, that could help students not to go out. I think that could help students to stay inside and, and quarantine or not quarantine, but look for social interactions in a safe mandated way that the school can overlook on instead of going out into the night and, you know, mingling with whoever they want. I think that it's a very important decision that, you know, we look at all the implications of not having a regulated social interaction. And I believe that's all I'm going to say.
Great. And Brian, can I respond to that real quickly?
You may, please.
Thanks, Hudson. Good, good questions. First, I, I think I appreciate you asking the question. Can we flip the, flip the lens a little bit and, and look at the theater department and, and compare that to the basketball scenario? I think that that's a worthy exercise. So with regard to the theater department, we were able to make that happen because we adhered to those at least, I would say the, the three principles, the core principles that I talked about earlier, which were social distancing. In other words, during the theater production, people were, participants were more than six feet apart. And, and that was very, very important. And they were not, you know, do, they were not sharing an instrument, if you will, like a basketball. So those, those scenarios or those adjustments to the program from our perspective made it safe. And I think that, you know, if I could, if we could have a basketball program that kept students more than six feet apart, really more like 12 feet apart, because the research suggests that when you're exercising and you're exhaling forcefully, six feet should really be 12 feet. But if we could at least keep kids six feet apart, students six feet apart, have them not share the basketball, if you will, and wash your hands, I would make that happen. And that is why, by the way, the school district approved the off-season workouts because the off-season workouts were with masks, they were with social distancing. And my understanding was that basketballs were not being shared. So those, that environment is much different than a traditional basketball season. So I'm not opposed to, and I said this to some parents that I met with, I'm not opposed to organizing activities which have students playing basketball, but not in the format which has them closer than six feet without masks and sharing a basketball. So that's the first, the first part of your, your comment or question. And then the second part is, you know, you, I think you accurately point out that you're at an age where you know, students, youth want to be social and it would be nice if the school could create an environment that's safe and that environment's better than them being outside or, or being left to their own devices. I agree with you, except the environment that basketball represents as it's currently organized, from my perspective, doesn't appear to be safe. In fact, it appears to be very unsafe in terms of the lack of masks, lack of social distancing and the sharing of basketballs.
Thank you, Jeff. Hudson, if you'd want to say one last thing before we move on to, we have a lot of the public here that would like to speak.
Yeah, I would just kind of like my last kind of comment would be that the, the data and the studies show that it's more social contact that spreads COVID-19 than athletic events. And I'll just kind of.
Mr. Nichols did offer some kind of modified plan. Is that something you would be open to discussing with him?
Completely, yeah. Um, yeah, I think that, I think, I think. I mean, I think that, um, yeah, I think it's very important to have that discussion. And I think that there's, I think there's, I can, I mean, I'm not going to speak for the whole basketball team, but I believe that all of them in some way wants a outward expression, I guess. And I think that'd be very important. And I also think about the, just the last kind of thing about touching the ball and everything. I think that hand sanitizers have been proven to work after they've been, been applied and for, you know, I think they last on services longer than they were put on there or some, something to that degree. So I think that, I mean, I think there's something that we could do for almost every complication, but that just matters to the, you know, what the board is willing to do.
But it seems like Mr. Nichols is open to some kind of modification to that. So my opinion would be you guys should pursue that as the team because it seems like there's an opportunity there, not in the traditional sense, but in some kind of modified version based on the, the current status of the world.
Is that, is that still to me or am I?
Well, that was just a comment based on what Mr. Nichols had said in response to you, that that could be an avenue to get what you're looking for and came here this evening. Great. Scott, if we could take the next hand? Scott?
Did you want to go back to Heather Hartstead?
I did.
Okay, we'll go back to her right now. Go ahead, Heather. Heather, you're muted, I believe.
Can you hear me? Am I, am I good?
We can hear you.
You are.
Guys, I'm so sorry. Are you able to hear me?
Yes. You can hear that.
Okay. Um, so you know, I am a community member who has been on the board meetings, you know, for all these months. And when I can't personally attend, I listen. And I feel that I've been very, very engaged hugely and unbelievably grateful, respectful of the board of the, of the district, of the unbelievable achievement of our district. I mean, ad nauseam, I celebrate our district all the time. Okay? Absolutely true. We have kept the schools open. This is true. I feel in the environment that we are currently navigating and as a, as a citizen of the world, as a member of the Sag Harbor community, I feel like I have to be the person who verbalizes the opposing statistics that everybody keeps throwing out as if they're backed personally, you know, like as if somebody is holding a piece of paper, throwing out scary statistics so that the community can listen to these scary statistics, right? But I want, I'd like to read a statistic as well. Okay? We are talking about a disease in deep respect to anyone and everyone who has lost someone. It is horrific. It is terrible. I wish it on no one. But we are talking about a disease that has a worldwide death rate of 0.02%. I, I don't even like giving statistics, but if I have to listen to random, random statistics being thrown out as truth, I mean, that is, that is everywhere. That's a truthful statement. Now, that said, we're looking at an age group specifically based on science that has been proven to not be at high risk of death. And beyond that, why aren't we talking about the social and emotional needs of our high school students? I mean, I, I keep hearing everybody say, I'm sorry. I know that, you know, this really isn't great for you and I know you want to be social and I know that that's really hard for you, but what about the kids that are committing suicide? And thank God, thank goodness, we have not had that in our community, but I hope we never get there. And it is real what is going on right now. We're a year deep.
Heather, thank, thank you. That was, we, I appreciate that. I think the board appreciates that. It's a challenge on all fronts. There is an avenue to, there's not an avenue, it seems at this point, to return to normal. I think everyone would agree with that. It sounds like there can be some kind of modified return to basketball, not in the traditional sense that Mr. Nichols is looking into. So I think that is worth pursuing. I think we're reviewing things on a daily basis, but it's not going to be a traditional season at this point.
Do you want to move on to others with their hands raised?
Yes, please, Jeff. Scott, sorry, I was looking at Jeff.
No problem. Okay. So next up we have the screen show Sam Culver. Sam, I'm sorry, but the software you use, it is not up to date. We have a link on the website if you want to update your software at a later time. You could use the chat window for now. And we will switch over to Madison Stuckert. Go ahead, Madison.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay. Um, hi, I'm Madison. I'm a junior and I play field hockey, which is now a moderate risk sport, but I can relate to and completely understand all of the kids who are playing the high-risk sports right now or not playing the high-risk sports right now. I think the sports are like a really big deal and it's a really big decision to make. And I want to thank the board for letting for giving me the opportunity to hear from a child, a teen's perspective who's going through it. I play travel field hockey with East End Field Hockey up the island and I also play for the school, obviously. And when I haven't been playing for the school, I've been playing up the island and we have been wearing masks. I play indoor and outdoor. So we've been wearing masks, we use hand sanitizer, we get our temperature taken before and we record it on a piece of paper and sign it. And I have, one of the girls that I play with, and I play with a lot of girls from up the island, have not gotten COVID from playing the travel sports with East End Field Hockey. And I think that, like, that's kind of a a big deal to take into account that if you're not playing with the school, you're going to find another way to play. And I think especially for trying to get recruited and noticed by colleges, it's got, it's really hard not being able to play with the school. I know for me, it has like taken a big toll on trying to reach out and like get out there with not having a season. And I completely understand, like, the virus is a really big deal and it's, it sucks and it's sad that it has to happen, but I think that there's a point where we can be responsible and still be able to play sports, high-risk, moderate-risk, low-risk with still being safe and taking all the precautions necessary to play the sports. And I think that it, it's just a really big, like, part in everyone's lives, especially the kids, because it's something to look forward to after a long day of school. And it's like an outlet for everyone. And it's just somewhere to go and forget about, like, outside for a little while and be able to play the sport that you love with the people. And I think it's definitely up to the kids and the parents too, who, if you're willing, you're, if you're willing to have your kid play a sport, I think it should be up to the parents and the kids. And yeah, that's all I have.
Thank, thank you very much, Madison. Jeff? If anything, if, if not, we'll move on to the next speaker, but thank you very much. You're muted, Jeff.
Yep. I, I think that I sort of addressed Madison. First of all, Madison did a, a nice job of articulating her thoughts. So I want to compliment her on that. But I do think I covered, when I talked about the slippery slope in terms of allowing students to opt out and go remote and letting parents make that decision. I, I thought that was a bit of a slippery slope. So I think I've covered that. Really had anything else to add at this point?
And I, I know that I'm not, but for Madison, I reached out to you via email. So I'm happy to help with recruiting because I understand the process very well and I'm, we're here to support you as a school. And I know Mr. Bramhoff can help as well navigate it through our contacts as well as our connections.
Brian, I do, I do want to mention one other thing to all the people who are on the board meeting this evening, and that is we continue to monitor the situation. At the beginning of my presentation tonight, I referenced the test positive rate, the seven-day rolling average, and I gave you some context going back to the end of November. And we will continue to monitor that. And I know that Mr. Kriegsman talked a little bit about upstate New York and the counties surrounding Albany and how they opted out of, of high-risk sports. And they actually set a threshold of a 4% test positive rate for consideration of, of opting into sports. And I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I bring it up because Madison talked about being in a moderate risk sport. And we do have the next season coming up, which is in March. And I want to let everybody know that we, we're going to continue to monitor all of the, the developments that I referenced earlier, whether it was the test positive rate, whether it's the mutant strains of the virus and the extent to which they're spreading in our country and in our community. All of that information is going to inform us in terms of the recommendation we make to the board, the advisory recommendation or the decision I have regarding the next season, which is in early March.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Brittany.
Okay. So next up we have someone, it just indicates Soko or Sako. Sorry, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, but you can go ahead. It just indicates Soko or Sako. Sorry, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, but you can go ahead.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I apologize. My, my first name is Frank, last name is Sokolowski, and it looks like that was kind of preloaded on the, the name. But first off, I just want to thank the board. I want to commend, obviously, our superintendent. I feel like everything is taken into consideration. I feel like our kids at school, the measures that have been taken are, are very appreciative and, and I believe set a great precedence for every district in Suffolk County. I know we're short on time. I want to try to get right to my point. First off, I would like to commend Madison and Hudson to have young leaders in the school that speak so elegantly or can get their point across. It definitely it, I commend it. I think it was amazing. I do want to hit on a couple of points. First and foremost, I feel like you've addressed every question. I kind of just want to elaborate a little bit more on the social, emotional component that athletics bring to a student athlete. I believe that only this, we are in unprecedented times and the health and safety obviously is paramount, but you do have to look at the totality of the circumstance for everything. And we've never really had anything as far as a pandemic to compare it to. The closest thing that I could try to correlate this to is the 1979 austerity that I spoke to East Hampton people where athletics were affected and canceled. And then those ripple effects are still felt to this day. So to take health, I don't want to undermine health. As, as a former health education, I believe it is paramount and the decisions you make or are the decisions you are making are very difficult. However, we are basing a lot of this on the what-if. And with percentages so low, and I hate to think of statistics like mortality rate, you have to understand that these athletes from a young age, although we do live on the East End, and I believe is the most beautiful area of Suffolk County, we are geographically isolated. And these students that have driven or driven by athletics to become productive members of society, that is obviously an education-based, however, are taking athletics, which keeps them in line with, with stress relief and, and goals or goal-oriented possibly to maybe become a collegiate athlete to travel all over, to build up as a community with a team, with members that they have now grown up with and, and share, have all these shared experiences to come down to their junior or senior year where they're able to showcase their talent on what-if is very difficult for me to digest. And, and I do commend the health and safety aspect, but you do have to understand that we're basing this on what might happen if we started the season, just like every other school district in Suffolk County. And we did start the season and we did have a little mini-episode where the season is canceled. I feel like a lot of members of the public would, would have an understanding, but we're not even giving them a chance. And that is what's very difficult, because when you have that social, emotional or that affective reasoning to continue with the sport and to not even give it a shot, to not even try, to not even allow these, these people like Madison and Hudson, you see them speak, but let, let them showcase their talents on what they've been working for since they were going to biddy basketball is very difficult for something that is a very low percentage. But again, I, I, I just want to commend everybody because, especially Mr. Nichols, the way you are able to articulate your points are great. And I just, I, I want to thank you for the time and to just, you know, allow me to express my point.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we do have another person up. I'm sorry, I'm not even going to, to attempt the name.
Angelica Tobias.
Oh, that's what it says. Thank you, Ms. Carrera. Please go ahead, Angelica. Your, your microphone, there you go.
Hi, we can hear you.
Hi. Oh, I was trying to turn my camera on. All right. So, hi, I'm Angelica. I'm a senior at Pearson High School. And I'm talking on behalf of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I am the student leader of the group. And I'm also speaking, you know, on behalf of the Calendar Committee as far as a new topic, a new old topic of renaming Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have taken a survey and we've had over 141 responses, 12th grade being the highest percentage, 22%. And we've had a lot of interesting responses to the question. Overall, overall, 50% say that we should in fact change it to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we, after we found the statistics, we asked ourselves the question, did people just say this to be nice or to hop on a bandwagon? And we didn't. We gave an option for an open-ended response. And a lot of them were very, they were very bright. I liked a lot of them. One says it should be a day to represent and commemorate the indigenous people of this country who were stripped of their lives, culture and values. But yet we celebrate the victors, quote unquote, the victors. Then all, all of the indigenous people, all, all in favor of the indigenous people gave answers like that. However, the people who opted for people day Columbus Day, most of the answers were tradition. Now we have a problem with the word tradition because that's not how it should be. The history that we've been taught, that I've been taught since I was a kid is very one-sided. It's, it's neglecting the actual culture of this land that we are on, especially here in Sag Harbor. We, we live around Shinnecock, the rez, Mash Ashing Park, Ron Concom, like all of these names, and yet they're completely neglected on Columbus Day because because it was told from the victor side of the story. With the name alone indigenous people, I feel like it starts a conversation and starting conversation is where education starts. And to me, and especially I have younger siblings, so I would like for them to know both sides of the story and hopefully other generations to understand that as well. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Angelica. I know that the committee's been doing a lot of work. Both the committees that you just referenced that you were on, so we, we appreciate that and thank you for that. And I know that is part of Mr. Nichols' report a little, that we're going to get to in a little bit. So I would, I would just ask Angelica, if you could stay with us for when we have that part of the presentation. But we do appreciate your feedback and the work that you've done over the last few months on that.
Okay, so then next up, we have Tim Culver.
Go ahead, Tim. Hi, you can hear me, I said?
We can.
So thanks. I just want to supplement the incredibly articulate talking points by Hudson and the basketball program to try to enforce the fact that this is an important action to be taken and not to lightly just move forward in the name of not focusing on what's best for the students. I, I understand the issue is risk. We understand that the, the school wants to maintain safety, but it's not a zero-sum game. We've decided to take risk here. The kids go to school every day. I was an advocate of that. The little, the grammar school kids go every day. The high school kids go twice a week and then alternate three days a week. We have inherited risk. We've taken risk in this environment. So the question is, what is the right level of risk we're going to take? And so while I appreciate the comments of the bus drivers will have to isolate, the siblings will have to be remote, the siblings will not be able to go to school. We don't apply those same rules to the kids that swim or go to track. And when 50 other communities have agreed to allow and take the risk for the benefit of the students to have basketball, it strikes me that that is just the definition of an arbitrary decision. And while I say that respectfully of the difficult choices the administration makes, the fact is, it is arbitrary. All of the other health departments, communities have decided that this is a risk worth taking. So I guess the question really is, why is it that we should be the standout community that does not follow what other communities have chosen to do? Do not follow the rules consistently with the other sports. We allow swimming, we allow track. They do not wear masks while swimming. They, they are in pools, they are in close connection in track. That's the point of track, to run close to the guy in front or behind you. So this idea that we're going to use these platitudes of we're saving the community from this, and I, again, I say this respectfully, but it's not a zero-sum game. We have inherited risk. We have as a community agreed to take on this risk. So the question is, what level of risk should we take? And I think you're hearing from the students and the parents that these are risks we're willing to take, willing to take on, having the kids sit remote. And I would say the last thing to add context here is this is seven days of remote. Seven additional days for the remote varsity kids to be home. Lastly, and Brian, I appreciate the point that Jeff is offering to find a solution with Hudson. The season starts tomorrow. Like, this is not, like, we don't have time and the kids aren't going to play virtual horse. Let the kids play basketball. This is a risk we've inherited. We've taken it on and the, and the, the school district should take it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I would, I would disagree respectfully with, with Tim's definition of this being an arbitrary decision. I think that a, an objective consideration of the risks associated with track and swimming would suggest that there's a different risk undertaken when compared to basketball and/or wrestling. And I think that you know, part of it is, part of it, you could, I guess, reference the definition of high risk versus moderate risk. But even if you go to the CDC website and you look at their, their statement on aquatics, for instance, they say the CDC is not aware of any scientific reports of the virus that causes COVID-19 spreading to people through the water in pools, hot tubs, water, playgrounds, or other treated aquatic menus. So, you know, we could go back and forth. And, you know, we could each raise points, but from my perspective, it's not arbitrary. It's based on, from my opinion, an objective evaluation of the three things that I referenced before, which were social distancing, mask-wearing and the washing of hands. And I think that when you throw all three of those out, that activity poses a greater risk. So that's, that's my response.
Thank you, Jeff. Any members of the board wish to comment at this point? Are there any other hands, Mr. Fisher?
Sorry, it's your goes. Just a quick question. Maybe Eric has an answer on that one. So we discussed in the last meeting that we're going to monitor how the other schools are doing, you know, if their rates increase because of their participating high, high-risk sports. If we don't participate now, which we're not participating, is it something we can reevaluate in a month or two, or the season is over and it's done for this year?
In terms of the decision, I think that that's a question for Superintendent Nichols. And decision we can reevaluate.
I think your goes, we can evaluate the, the data and the experience of other districts, but know that the season in question that we're discussing roughly ends in about three weeks.
Okay.
So the next season starts up, as per my previous comments, the beginning of March. And we'll need to make a recommendation sooner rather than later with regard to whether we're going to proceed with that.
Okay.
Okay, we have Angelica again.
Yeah.
Okay, hold, hold on one second, please. Okay, go ahead, Angelica.
Hi again. Um, this is actually going to be on topic this time.
No, no, that's fine. We were happy to hear that report before too.
I realize that it was, it was not the best time to say that, but I would like to speak on behalf of basketball. I was a basketball manager for the boys last year. It was, it was a great experience to have, even though they all drove me insane. It was basically coach put me in charge of trying to, you know, wrangle them, whatever they were out during the school day. So whether it's, you know, they went out or we went out to a party, something like that. I was the one to make sure they were doing stuff properly. Make sure they weren't skipping classes, make sure the grades were in order, et cetera, et cetera. And I've talked to some of the boys and a lot of them feel like if it, this is their last year. So a lot of them feel like if they have to sign something that says they won't go out past here, they won't do this, they won't do this, they will do this, they'll do it. I, I really think that's something to think about because for them, it's this serious that they would give up a lot of, you know, other forms of social interaction for this. It being their last season. I think it is an important thing to have. We, we've, we've been stripped of a lot of things this year. And I feel like we're continued to be stripped of them. So I would just like to, you know, have that in consideration that the boys are willing to give up a lot to play basketball this season. And I know it's not, of course, the ideals, the ideal problem, the ideal situation, I'm sorry. But I would really like for, you know, the boys' feelings and everybody's feelings basically to be considered in those. That's all.
Thank you.
Hudson's hand raised for, because Andy Brindle, his dad, would like to speak.
Okay, Mr. Fisher?
Hudson is a participant, a panelist, so he can go ahead and talk.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, it may be slightly redundant, given that Hudson then has already made his statement and started his survey, spoken to the press, spoken to Mr. Nichols and sent a letter to or several letters maybe to, to the board. But, you know, putting his views aside, I, I'd just like to reiterate slightly, some other people have said in terms of the unilateralism of the decision. It's one of these easy decisions where it's easy to say in the safety of the students and the faculty and the associated parts of the school that we would be, we would take a no decision or a not, an option not to opt in. I'd like to understand myself, for myself, how that can possibly be in line with an informed decision, which I think Hudson mentioned as, as being one with superior information to everybody else or a specific local case which is different to the other districts. And, you know, having been a board member at Southampton myself for five years, having children in both schools, I fundamentally don't understand the inequality of one child versus another seven miles apart, living in the same house. I don't understand why there wouldn't be a better process of collaboration between the administration, the board, the coaches, the children, the parents, trying to look at ways to get to yes. What we've had is a decision which, you know, you have my sympathies that that had to be made before we understood that there were 50 other districts that decided differently in the absence of information, but that information has changed. So I am, you know, unhappy with the process, to be, to be frank. I'm unhappy that there wasn't some form of working group put in place to investigate ways to do this, that the decision was made without a vote, without collaboration. I take issue with Mr. Nichols, your characterization in your speech of a CDC report, which is not an official CDC report. It's an author, is a CDC person independently having an ed. I find that to be disingenuous in a place where there's a lot of fake news out there and you can find a report that tells you pretty much whatever you want to support your position. I think we need to be better about using official means. And I fundamentally don't understand why an individual school district would feel itself able, better able in the absence of individual criteria for that district to choose to, to not go along with the, the common collective understanding and position of the state, the county and other districts. And if they choose to do that, why they would not themselves then go off and talk to those other districts, to Southampton, to East Hampton, to the other places. So I'd personally like to understand how many other districts did Mr. Nichols and the board contact to make this decision? And what facts did they think were irrelevant with respect to this? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Do you want me to address that time or not?
I'm going to hold up. I'm going to have you address that, Jeff, but if there's any more hands, I'd like to hear the comments and then we can address all of that. So So we would then be able to move on to our budget agenda this evening.
Great.
Yes, we have Logan here, who is up next. Go ahead, Logan.
Hi, my name is Logan Hart. And I'm a 10th grader at Pearson. One of the things that has been said is that we are trying to keep the community safe. But it seems from what I have heard and what I've seen from the petition, having 700-plus signatures and everyone who is in this meet tonight, that's a part of the community being pro basketball, feel like it's being a little counterintuitive and not really going to complete anything when all these people are on board with us playing. Also, I have been playing basketball, full contact games up island in a safe and controlled manner for a couple of months now. Through an AAU basketball team, there's been zero COVID cases. It hasn't been stopped at all due to any issues. Everyone is wearing masks. And I think people are just very, very want, I can't think of the word, but people really want to play basketball and people are willing to make many sacrifices, which I think our team has shown. We even said that we were willing to go fully online for the duration of the season. And I think that it has been a little closed-minded and just spewing facts that really aren't pertinent to all of the other information that has been displayed. And finally, the school has been listening to state guidelines all along, not CDC. I don't know why we're changing that for this certain instance. Because one of the, the Governor Cuomo, who has been so locked down since the beginning, is willing to do this. I don't know how we could have any different opinions coming locally. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Logan. Mr. Nichols? You're muted, Jeff.
Is there anybody else? Because I thought we were gonna try to get through all of the
That was it. I don't see any other hands up.
Okay, so I'll start with Logan and then I'll move on to Mr. Brindle. Yeah, Logan, you make, as the other students who spoke tonight, I just want to compliment you on articulating your perspective quite well. And, and thank you for participating. I, I, I really can't speak to, to the why of the logic of why Suffolk County in the end of November, early December, with a 4.2% test positivity rate, opted to make a decision not to proceed with high-risk sports. And then two months later, with a test positive rate roughly double, made a decision to move forward. And I can't speak to what, what was behind that logic. I did say in the January 25th meeting that there may be a little bit of fatigue going on, but that's speculation on my part. And I think I've covered the thinking with regard to the rationale behind the decision, probably redundant a few times. So that, that pretty much addresses your comments, probably not satisfactorily from your perspective, Logan, but for the, for the purposes of the meeting tonight, that's pretty much what I can say. With regard to Mr. Brindle, you asked a specific question, which is, how many other districts did I consult with? I didn't consult with other districts regarding our decision, but I was privy to what the thinking was. I'm part of a superintendent's tech stream. So I was aware after we made our recommendations that the majority of districts, and I've since found out, every other district has opted to allow high-risk sports to proceed. I'm not sure what else I could really comment on pertaining to your comments. You accurately point out that the authors of that study, it's not an official CDC study per se, but I did take it from the CDC website. So if that's a mistake on my part, so be it. Thanks for pointing that out. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Is there anybody from the board who would like to say anything before we move on with our agenda? Board. We'll move on to section five of the agenda, the superintendent's report.
So I had talked a little bit, or extensively, actually, probably too much about there's the lastic sports. I just wanted to give you a quick update on two other issues that we're in the process of pursuing. The first is COVID testing. We sent notice out to the community that will be through Enzo Laboratories, holding PCR testing our first session on Tuesday, February 23rd. We sent out notice to the community and the important part is that there's no cost to any participants who elect to go through the testing. Enzo Labs will come in. People are, we gave them directions that school families to go online, fill out the insurance information. It'll go through your insurance, no cost to you. If you don't have health insurance, the district will pick up the cost. And we've built that into our budget. The pertinent information, we have to do a minimum of 150 tests, a maximum of 300 on the 23rd. And our tentative plan is to test every two weeks moving forward. This is a little different, significantly different actually than, than the rapid testing that's happened through the Suffolk County Department of Health. And in previous meetings, I've gone over the accuracy differences between the rapid tests and the PCR tests. So I won't go through that again. The second development is that we are pursuing the possibility of our school being a vaccine distribution site. And we've made inquiries with a, a Long Island urgent care facility who ran a vaccination day in a neighboring district and was able to vaccinate up to 300 or about 300 staff members in that district. We're in touch with the doctor who facilitated that. And as we get additional information, we will share that with the board. But at the request of that individual, we did send out a survey to all employees in the district inquiring as to whether or not they would be interested in having the vaccine on school grounds. And our responses, which we shared with the doctor requesting it, indicated that we would have about 175 employees who would elect to take the vaccine. And that, that information has been shared with the doctor who requested it. And again, as I get more information, I'll, I'll let the board know.
Thank you, Jeff. And we had one question with respect to that, Jeff, that if you could update us on, you know, attendance and current status of the pandemic on staffing and how we're doing with respects to that.
So in terms of staffing, a couple of board members had spoken about it earlier. We've been particularly close to having to go all remote due to quarantine. So basically, anytime there's a case that's positive in the school, we have to do something called contact tracing, which is to determine who has been within six feet of the person who tested positive for more than 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. Those people are deemed close contacts and are then required to quarantine. As a result of that process, there have been several instances during the course of the year where multiple staff members have had to quarantine. And I've said from the start that those quarantines are, are what is ultimately, if it happens, likely going to push us to go all remote because from a managerial perspective, we won't have the staff to run the building. I think it peaked our problems at the end of January, which sort of coincided a little bit with the test positive rate. And I'm hopeful that as the rate goes down, if it continues to go down, maybe the risk will lessen. But again, let's see what happens after the Super Bowl in February. There has been some talk about possibly moving to bringing more students back for regular instruction. In other words, right now at the high school in grades nine through 12, students come to school essentially two days, one week, three days the next. And what we're going to be doing is putting out a survey to families inquiring as to whether or not they would be interested in coming back though to a full-time status. The reason that I'm, or not me, the reason the high school, middle school administration is proposing that is that some of the attendance right now for our in-person students, person, the students who opt to come to school has been less than it should be. So as a result of that, we need to take some proactive steps to see what, what the possibilities, you know, what is the possibility of bringing more students back? To break it down into concrete terms, let's say we had a class of 10 students in an English nine section. It's not unusual to have only three or four students present because the six or seven who are, should be there are opting to study remotely on that given day. So we've got to do a little digging and see if we can improve improve attendance. And maybe one of the vehicles through which we do that is to offer more days in the school. But we'll update the board as we get more information.
Thank you, Jeff.
Welcome.
Can I ask a question related to that, please?
Yes, sure.
Are we seeing a percentage in attendance of, you know, those that would be attending but aren't? Does that, is that influenced by whether the, the lead teacher in that subject or class is present versus remote?
I don't have the answer to that yet. I can get back to you on that. What we are seeing, I think, and Ms. Carrier or Mr. Guinan or Ms. Westhoff, feel free to chime in, is that my sense is that like if the weather is a little, if it's really cold on a day, a lot of students are just opting to say, I'm gonna study remotely today. And we don't have any real teeth to the attendance policy. So one of the alternatives is that we could send a letter home to all the kids and say, look, if you have 18 or more absences, you're denied credit. But that doesn't seem all that thoughtful in an environment like this where, you know, the goalposts are constantly moving and we need to be understanding. So I think the survey is, is probably a thoughtful way to go about it. Brittany or Mike, Laura, if you're chime in.
So we did send out an attendance letter to families concerned because since the beginning of the new year, the 2021, we've seen a significant decline in our high school learners that are hybrid coming into the building. In that letter, there was a survey that we put, put out because we did want to review the data. However, only 218 families out of the six through 12, which is 531, responded. So we realized maybe sometimes in the letter, we don't put the actual survey into it because I don't think people are reading as much. And I, it's not a reflection on our community. It's because we all have COVID fatigue. We're also noticing that qualitatively through talking to faculty and staff, when kids have assessments on that day, they feel more comfortable possibly taking those assessments at home instead of in person, if it falls on that day, as well as when projects are due and various things. Our students are children at heart and they like to work the system and might manipulate it. So our faculty is feeling that a little bit, but also the comfort of their bedroom and their home, it's very hard to come in. And I would say qualitatively, and I've said this before, our middle school students, for being in person every day, they're gung ho, but they're the in that transition time where they like to be at school to an extent still, even though they want to pretend that they don't. While our high school students, they want to have that camaraderie and that is stripped away with the wearing of the mask as well as lunch and all that other stuff. Mike or Laura, would you like to add?
I think you captured it. I think doing another survey is the right first step to figuring out how to get students into school on a more regular basis to benefit from in-person learning.
And I agree with both of you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other board questions? Okay. Jeff, items up. You're still under superintendent's report for 5-1 and 5-2, please.
So Angelica chimed in during public input, which I think was appropriate because that is public input, but
Absolutely.
Part of our superintendent's report tonight is to summarize from some committee members, the work of the calendar committee. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Carriero in a moment, but basically, the committee was convened to talk about our school calendar and some specific holidays that have raised interesting discussions amongst the students and, and community members. And those holidays, and I don't want to limit the discussion to these holidays, but the holidays that for the most part we discussed were Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Juneteenth. And the discussion centered around what those holidays signify to different groups. What are the historical considerations? What do those these mean at different times in history and to whom? And so the committee wrestled with that. We've had a couple of meetings. But we are in the process very soon of having to adopt the calendar for 2021, 22. So I thought it would be prudent for the committee to summarize from their perspective, not from the superintendent's perspective, but from the committee members' perspective, some of the stuff that, some of the issues they've discussed and their thoughts. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Carriero.
All right. So the committee has been meeting. We have one committee member, one of our teachers, Mr. Stewart, who's on the line and will be able to speak as well as our student representatives, which I think we should do first. We have two middle school committee members, Angelique Chavez and Marissa Walters, who are going to do a video. I assumed that this meeting was gonna be long and I didn't want them to be on the call for too long, being a middle school. Trying to be thoughtful of that. So I had them pre-record a video that Ms. Westhoff spearheaded with their thoughts and Scott's going to play that right now.
Great.
Angelique Chavez and Marissa Walter, two middle school members of our calendar committee, were kind enough to sit down with me and discuss their thoughts on Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and Juneteenth. They're going to start off by sharing their thoughts about Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day.
That we should change Indigenous Peoples' Day to, I mean, we should change it to Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's because all the atrocities that he committed. In addition, he assaulted many of the native tribes. There's a lot of controversy around him. He didn't discover America because Leif Erickson could have possibly discovered America before him. He brought disease to the natives such as polio and a lot of other diseases. He enslaved thousands of native people. And he is not a good example of Italian heritage. There are many examples of great people who can't come from Italian heritage. In addition, he would assault natives and then parade them around the street, which is not a good example of someone who should have their own holiday.
What we thought about Indigenous Peoples' Day, because it's not just about Columbus, there's also other heritages like Spanish, English, Italian, and so many others. That it's, for some people, they could consider it as a real tradition. But maybe not having it as just Columbus Day would make them feel better.
For the native people, they would celebrate their own heritage in that day and we would learn about their heritage in like school or we would have like one class where we'd learn about what all they, all they did. And then we could really celebrate them properly with knowing everything that happened.
Now both girls will share their perspectives on adding Juneteenth to the Sag Harbor calendar.
Change it to Juneteenth because I feel like a lot of people don't Change it to Juneteenth because I feel like a lot of people don't know about it. Because like when I've talked to people about it, like I asked them what Juneteenth is and they really don't know. And I feel like we should try to like educate them about it. And really we should celebrate the people who were finally free. And I feel like we should just educate everyone in school about what was happening and like all the people that were free and everything that happened.
Think why we should have Juneteenth as, as a school day instead of a non-school day is because like Marissa said, that we don't always have, we don't, some people don't know about it. And if we just have like how they got out of, instead of being slaves, they got, and it'd be like Black History Month, but just with that day that would all learn about it and would understand it a bit better and actually not have a day off just because of not knowing what it is.
Like an educational day or something.
So thank you to Marissa and Angelique, because I know it takes a lot also to be videotaped while saying your feelings. And I want to say kudos to them. And during the committee, I have to say our student representatives from the middle school students to the high school students were very eloquent and also empowered enough to speak a different perspective than the majority of adults on the call. So I'm going to now switch gears to Hudson Brindle, who's a panelist, because he'll be able to present his presentation on the findings that he did as a student representative as well as his opinion on the matter.
All right. I will share my screen right now. Sorry, just having a little bit of trouble.
Hudson, I have it. Do you want me to share my screen so that and then go through it?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Hudson, do you want to give a background while I get my screen up?
Yeah. So basically, the last calendar committee meeting, I along with Richard Bronco attended the meeting and the interesting concept of changing the, they formerly known as Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day brought up. And a lot of people talked very passionately about it. So Richard and I decided as part of the student council that we could organize a survey to see basically what the student body was feeling and what specific issues they have or don't have with the changing, if this were to become changed. So that is the background and I believe we had, as Angelica said before, around 141 responses. And yeah, that's, here we go.
Thanks, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Someone just has to tell me when to advance the slides.
Okay, so this is the student input on Columbus Day. This is the pie chart of all the, of all the grade responses. As you can see, the biggest by far was that 22% down here in the blue and that was the senior class. The 17.7% was the ninth grade class, I believe. But this really just shows the, the representation of the grades throughout. And as you can see, it's a pretty even response based on the screen. You can change the response, you can change the slide now. All right. So this is the question. Yes is the same as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I just wanted to clarify that. So as you can see here, we had over half of the student population or student body, around 53% voted that, or not voted, but sent in the response that they would. They, they do think that the second Monday in October should be called Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. And what we did here is we just didn't want some, something that kind of was like one dimensional. We didn't want people to just select an answer and move on with their day. We want, really wanted to see what the student body was thinking and feeling towards this issue. So if you can change the slide, we have actual responses that students gave to kind of clarify their argument. And this is responses, I decided to do it in two different slides. One slide is the responses that were in favor of changing it. And I'm just going to read two of the quotes at the very top and feel free to read any of the other ones. So the, it recognizes that the native people were here first and deserved to be celebrated. Many holidays celebrate American victories, but very few recognize the people who were here before we invaded them. And another one goes by naming the holiday Columbus Day and implies that the event we should celebrate it, Columbus finding a new world, whereas this brought hundreds of years of genocide upon the people already living in the Americas. I'm going to give you guys a couple of seconds to just read the rest of the responses. Yeah. And I think that's fine. Then move on to the slide. And this is from the other side here. I bolded two of them that I'm going to read out for you guys, but you guys can read the other responses. The first one goes, although Columbus did, did some bad things in the past, it did find the land that we live on today and should be honored for that. Also, history behind Columbus and what he did when he arrived has been twisted and seems way worse than the real events that happened. Another one is Columbus Day is to celebrate the discovery of Americas by Christopher Columbus, which is a pivotal moment in our nation's history, let alone world history. It isn't to celebrate the lands of indigenous people, but if people and the government believe that, that is something that worth recognition, that they can make it its own holiday, but to change Columbus State to a name which doesn't match its overall purpose is ridiculous. Yes. So I think you can do the last slide as well. Juneteenth, Juneteenth was another topic that we decided to include on the, on the slide. So the first question was, we were trying to get a census basically on what the student body knew about Juneteenth, if they knew anything at all. And we were pleasantly surprised around 70, 54% of the student body said, yes, they do know what Juneteenth is. And approximately the other, sorry, mental math here, 46, yeah, 46% did not. Or they have a general idea, but are not very sure. So the next slide would. So Juneteenth is for anybody who didn't know in this meeting, celebrates the emancipation of those who were enslaved United States. And then the question that we asked were, was, how do you think this state should be recognized? And there were three responses and you can read on the right there. The day that should be recognized as a holiday and we should have off. The day should be dedicated to education by slavery in the US. And the last one is, I do not have an opinion on this. And something important to note here is that the overwhelming majority of the student population said that this day should be recognized as a holiday and we should have off of school. Now, I'm not here to, to explain the reasoning behind that, but I just would like to propose that as a, as a result of the survey itself. And then the next slide as well. In conclusion, the majority of students agree that Columbus Day should be turned into Indigenous Peoples' Day. Majority, many students did not know at first what Juneteenth was. Majority of students do agree what we should have in, have the day of. And I would just like to add to a personal note, I've read a lot of emails and different things about Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I believe if I am correct, one second here, that there are already two Indigenous Peoples' Day on the calendar and I think one is celebrated in August. I very well could be incorrect about this, but one is celebrated in August and the other is the Friday after Thanksgiving. And also there's an Indigenous Peoples' Month in November. And this is not to say that they shouldn't have, the indigenous people should not have another day. That's not what I'm saying, but maybe we rename it into something that, something that maybe isn't Indigenous Peoples' Day, but still gives off relatively the same message of Native Americans or something that's good. So in my opinion, I could, I could change it to anything I wanted to, but I think that's left up to the decision of the community. And maybe Indigenous Peoples' Day isn't the right choice.
Thank you, Hudson.
Very much.
So we also heard from Angelica during the public input. I know she's still on the call. I just want to ask if she wants to add anything as she wasn't on the school calendar committee, committee. However, she was a part of the student created and student-led diversity and inclusion committee. And they brought this to our attention, I think last year and then this year again, because it was their first topic from their first meeting. So if we can unmute her.
She's all set.
Awesome.
All right. So hello again. Sorry, you know, harassing guys, but I'm here to talk once more. Since Hudson did all of the statistics, I would just like to go into detail about why this is so important. Because to a lot of people, I'm now realizing that, you know, people think it's quote unquote, not that serious. But in reality, if you like see the responses, as I said before, the word traditional is used a lot. And if we continue with this quote unquote tradition, history will be erased. So I would just like to elaborate on that for a second. The fact that the word tradition is used so often is a problem. The reason why tradition, of course, is a lack of education, correct education and just generations upon generations beating it into the next generation's head without questioning it. A simple name change, a simple name change is basically a way that we break the cycle of being just fed the information without questioning it. It's a, it's, it's the 21st century and we should not be teaching histories through the eyes of one person, which is the victory, the victors. I do understand how people feel about this situation. They would like to keep tradition and I do respect that. However, we are not acknowledging the sacrifices made in order to get to the place we are now. And to me, that's a problem. I had a comment in favor of Indigenous Peoples' Day that says, can I find it? I can't find it, but I'm just going to summarize it real quick. It basically said, I'm from Oklahoma, indigenous blood runs through my veins and I'm offended by the word Columbus. And I was able to see individual names. So I did reach out to the person and asked them, you know, why? And they just said, as a rebuttal, somebody could always say to me, oh, well, Columbus discovered America, quote unquote. But to them, it's like, all right, he discovered America, but also killed all of my ancestors. So to me, Indigenous Peoples' Day, I think is more, is more of a proper name. And yeah, that's my opinion on the indigenous, indigenous people situation as far as Juneteenth. We were also able to see individual responses and even though 53.9% recognized, they knew what Juneteenth was. There was also 53.9% that recognized it and wanted the day off. However, looking at, looking at all of the individual answers, a lot of the ones I saw were, no, I do not know what Juneteenth is, however, I want the day off. So it kind of disappointed me to know that people had no interest in knowing what it was, but they simply wanted the day off. Yeah, that, like I said, that's a major problem for me, even if, like even after we gave a short summary describing what it was, they still chose the day off. To me and other students, this is just students taking advantage of the excuse to have the day off. If Juneteenth was, if Juneteenth history was taught, I believe we can expose the future generations to important history that's very lightly glazed over, if not at all in school. I am a female double minority and I do encounter a lot of ignorance during my days around Pearson and Sag Harbor in general. And I do not blame the students. I do blame the teaching. However, because for such a small chat, for such a small town, the children are denied a lot of real world, real time situations. And the only thing that they're taught is through the school. Of course, social media, but the quote unquote proper way of teaching is through the school. So I feel like if we even have the name in the calendar, somebody in, let's say, fifth grade might ask, oh, what is this? And then all of a sudden, you have five of his friends ask him, oh, what did that end up being? And then you have knowledge spread around. So if we replace the in-world situations with proper education, I feel like that, that alone is going to help us now and us in the future. Because this, like I said, this is a very small town and I would like it to be more diverse, but it is pretty expensive to live over here. But that's, that's basically what I'm going to top, tap on now. I would like, like I said, my peers to be educated and Juneteenth to be taken seriously because it is, it's, it's, it's like, the way my cousin put it, it's like African-American single demile. And I do, I mean, that, that's what it is in a sense. So I just would really like this to be taken seriously and not pushed to the side because for some of us, it is very important.
Thank you, Angelica. Um, so now we heard from our student representative from our student diversity and inclusion committee. We also have one of our committee members, Mr. Stewart, who is our, one of our Spanish teachers at Pearson Middle High School to talk about his perspective and what he came from, from the conversations from the committee.
Hello, everyone. I think I probably came off as being an apologist for Columbus and I don't mean to, you know, discard all the terrible things he did. You know, he treated the Indians that he encountered terribly. The Spaniards who lived in his colony didn't like him. The Queen of Spain didn't like him. You know, everything that Angelique said is true. All these things are true. But you know, and he did have some good points to him too. He was, he was an incredible sailor, which is something I admire apart from the bad things. He really brought Europe and the world together. He was the first kind of multicultural person. He was a major figure in world history. So you guys, oh, you're probably thinking I'm sticking up for Columbus, but I'm not really, but he, he is somebody that is important. And the, the thing that I realized in the meeting was that the adults, most of the adults, one of them not, but most of the adults kind of wanted to keep Columbus Day. And most of the kids didn't want to keep Columbus Day. And partly that's just because of the, the way we're brought up. There's sort of a legend, there's a, you know, a story about America and that story includes Einstein and Elvis and and what do you know, it includes also Columbus. And that's part of what we came from. So I think the adults in the room kind of, were kind of clinging to that. Apart from his being Italian, I don't know if that mattered that much to everybody. I think it was more just that's, you know, who we, who we were used to. So I think that the task before Mr. Nichols and the board isn't really to say, well, let's look at all of the bad things that Columbus did and we've got 20 bad things and he did 19 good things. So we did 20 bad things of his bad, or vice versa, you know, it's, and we'll never know that. We'll never know what he was really like, what people saying bad things about him, because they didn't like him at the time. He was a political figure. They wanted to defrock him, you know? So we'll never really know what he was like. So I don't, I don't really think that's what it's about. I think it's about who wants to, to be, to feel better. Who, who needs the support? Who needs the affirmation of what they're thinking? And you know, I think it could go either way. And it's, it's up, it's up to Mr. Nichols and the board to decide that. But having given the kids the chance to do this, you know, you gotta, gotta do something. So one point though, which kind of might throw a different light on this, which I didn't mention in the original meeting. But I remember when I was in college, I studied anthropology and one of the artifacts that was discovered in the Aztec, not in the ruins, but among the Aztecs was a model of a cart with a wheel. And when the Spaniards invaded the Aztecs, the Aztecs And when the Spaniards invaded the Aztecs, the Aztecs didn't have wheels. But they had a plan to develop it. Um, so the question is, if Columbus had come to the new world and said, oh, somebody's here already and he'd gone home and left the Native Americans, left the Chinacocks and the everybody else, all the other Native Americans here, what would have happened to that? Probably the Aztecs would have taken over. And would they have been better than Columbus? What if, what if it had been someone else? What if, what if uh, someone came from the Pacific? What if it were the Japanese? Would it have been better? And the point is even, would it have been better if the Native Americans themselves hadn't had any influence from Europe or Asia? This is something we don't know, but to look back and say that uh, we have to judge somebody from our eyes, I think is, is kind of a mistake. And I think that the fact, the good thing is we're actually having this conversation and, and this conversation is a result of European enlightenment thinking. And I don't know if any other um, cultures would have done that. I don't know if they would have brought this kind of critical thought, this kind of openness, this kind of ability to let the kids kind of do away with Columbus Day to the table. So this kind of a contradiction and um, my, like I said, to summarize, the main takeaway that I got was the adults kind of wanted to keep Columbus Day and the kids don't want to have it.
Thank you.
I think that.
Uh, can I just add something? Cause I was at the meeting and one of the board members on the committee, I think that.
Yeah, I didn't, I think is that, was that it for the presentation, Brittany? I just wanted to do that before we.
I think so, because that was everybody.
Okay, sorry, Chris. Go ahead. I just wanted to make sure we got through everybody.
No, I, I just wanted to mention, uh, just for those, there's a limited amount of people that are at the meeting that from my memory, there were some adults that were advocating to keep it, some adults that were neutral and some adults that were more open to what the students were suggesting, which was to make a shift. So it really was a spectrum. I didn't, I don't remember it being completely generational. So I just wanted to add that, that that was my memory of it. Um, and, and that it's, um, but I would agree that there was the generational, there was a different perspective generationally in the sense that I, I, I heard the students coming at it, not being wedded in the past, but being wedded in looking at what they felt were the current facts that they knew about and what was fair and just. Versus we've done it this way and so we should continue doing it this way. And you know, kids generally tend to be more open to change than adults who've been around a long time.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. And there any other board questions?
Brian, I believe Mr. Still would like to talk again.
Okay, sure.
Go ahead, Cal.
Yeah, Chris was at the first meeting and she was one of the adults. I said, I think I said, most adults wanted to stick with Columbus. And of course, Chris was the one who was with the kids and for all good reasons. And um, I didn't want to uh, say that, you know, it was all that way, but I don't think there were any kids at the meeting who wanted to keep Columbus Day. That's it.
Thank you. Hi. Everyone has put in um, in working um, on this and, and having these discussions, which are important. Um, I'm sorry, Yorgos, go ahead.
Yeah, so I wasn't, I'm also a member of that committee. I wasn't in the last meeting, but I was in the one before. And I remember we had that discussion about adopting as Indigenous um, Peoples' Day, the day before Thanksgiving or the day after Thanksgiving. I don't remember right now. While we keep Columbus Day, is that still under discussion or?
I think the committee was bringing recommendations. I don't know if that's one of the recommendations that they're bringing. Perhaps they could circle back and, and let us know, or Ms. Carrero, perhaps you know it. I'm not putting you on the spot. I know you were coordinating. I don't know where they left off.
I can talk, I can talk to that, Brian, because I was the chair of the committee. I just uh, deputized Ms. Carrero to work with the students to present this evening. So Yorgos is correct that in the first meeting, um, there was discussion uh, about the possibility of naming a separate day for Indigenous Peoples' Day and the Wednesday Thanksgiving was um, discussed while keeping Columbus Day in the subsequent meeting. A second meeting, I think the focus shifted a little bit away from that and was more, you know, trying to um, get the student feedback more than um, more than an exchange between all, all participants. Um, but I think, you know, at our next board meeting, we can circle back with a range of options for the board to consider. Uh, and in, in those options will, will be what uh, Yorgos referenced.
Great. So there'll be follow-up to that. Thank you. Any other board questions before we uh, move on? And I think this is great and you'll circle back to us in our, in the next coming meetings, Jeff. Just let us know when that's, the committee's ready for recommendations and we'll, we'll uh, make sure to re-calender that.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So we get, we get emails on pretty much a weekly basis from people from all over pretty much the world to the Board of Education. Are those emails also forwarded to this committee? I think we got four today. So I just want to make sure that it's being representative from all sides and all the information is getting shared.
Yes. So I forwarded all the emails that I had received prior to the second committee meeting uh, to all the committee members and pretty much uh, prefaced forwarding those emails with uh, what you just said.
Sandy? You're muted. Oh, sorry. I didn't know if, I didn't know if you had follow-up. Sorry about that. Okay. Very good. I got the hand take off.
Yep, that's all. Thanks.
Um, great. Are we Jeff, on to?
We are, uh, we are on to the principal's report. And um, Ms. Carrero and Ms. Reynoso, who I believe is standing in for Mr. Malone, do you want to go through that? Hopefully fairly briefly.
I'll go very quickly. Um, as you know, we're going to be sending out a, a redo of the attendance survey from our response to the in-person learners for the hybrid model for the high school, as well as some of the middle school students being very much not um, as many students as we would hope. Um, and then we also this week, it's exciting. It's the positivity ploof in the middle school Whaler Wars edition. Um, Ms. Westhoff spearheaded that today. She did some fun Zoom trivia with um, each grade. And it was very fun to hear the different topics that were going on with a positive theme on compassionate and kindness during a very long school year that is in a pandemic. Um, we will be having also a Whaler Wars uh, for our high school students, um, an in-person and a remote option on Wednesday and Friday. And because of the small numbers in school, the students will be competing against each uh, grade. So we'll have two grades at one time competing against each other in different events um, for a period because we realize and understand the social emotional benefits of, of that. Um, and then the last thing I guess is that we've been looking at the data for, from grades to social emotional health and reevaluating um, how we put into our instruction, but also embedded into our instruction and the quarter two grades are in, we started our, we're now in the third quarter, the home stretch and um, have implemented some supports for our learners. Mandatory AISs to make sure that we have students passing for the year, but more so, more importantly, understand the content and the courses that they're learning. You're up, Ms. Reynoso.
If I could just hold you uh, one second, Ms. Reynoso. Mr. Fisher, um, can you resend the link uh, to Jordana, please, for the meeting? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Reynoso. Sorry.
No problem. Thank you. There's just uh, three things to mention. Uh, last week on Friday, we had our thirteenth annual Super Bowl. Uh, we collected about four hundred and thirty soup cans. All grades participated, participated with the exception of pre-K. And all the cans that were collected um, will help to fill the shortfalls at local food pantries. Over the past two weeks, the elementary school students have been working on creating Valentine's Day cards for children who are fighting cancer at Memorial Sloan Kettering. This was done through a collaboration with the, an organization known as the Scarlet Fund. And that's a non-for-profit that is in existence to support children fighting and living with cancer at Memorial Sloan Kettering. And then the last thing is it's Spirit Week at the elementary school. So this week we had Pyjama Day. Um, tomorrow we have Terrific Tuesday, which is where all the colors of the rainbow. Wednesday is Wacky Wednesday. Wear a costume or disguise. Thursday is Tremendous Thursday. Uh, wear your favorite team colors. And then Friday is School Colors or Pyjama Day again. And that is a recap of the last few weeks of the elementary school.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm gonna sort of go over the athletics wellness report because we, we just spent an awful lot of time on that.
Yeah, unless there's something different, Jeff, I would say we can, we can move on unless there's something that you were unable to cover. If not, we could discuss it on March first.
Correct. And just at March first, uh, the, the sports are field hockey, golf, uh, soccer, uh, boys and girls, girls swimming, girls and boys cross-country, girls tennis, volleyball and football. And I'll have a recommendation for the board uh, in the coming weeks. And next on the agenda is uh, Ms. Bouchami and six point three, her, her budget presentation. And um, I've asked her to be as quick and concise as she can be because we've, and that's not her nature because she's very, very thorough, but uh,
I got it. Okay. Let me start sharing my screen. Um, hold on a minute. Get my presentation. Then we'll get started. Okay, so tonight we're going to review our revenue projections, which are preliminary because it is still early in the budget process. We're also going to review the district office, business office, facilities, technology and transportation budgets. So just to recap the current year, our current year budget is um, forty-four million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that was a budget-to-budget increase from last year of three point three seven percent. Our property tax levy limit for the current year was three point one percent. But the tax levy increase that um, was, went out to the voters was two point seven one percent. So you, just in one year, um, many of these factors changed drastically. So if you look at the bottom of the slide, our proposed budget for next year includes a property tax levy limit of only one point five one percent. And a tax levy increase, since we want to stay under the cap at this point, or we're, we're, one of our objectives is to try to stay under the cap, is to go out to the voters with a one point five percent tax levy increase, which means that our budget-to-budget increase can only, is down to one point two two percent. So our budget for next year can only increase by one point two two percent. So these are all of our preliminary revenue projections for next year. And I just want to review some of them. So our tax levy, of course, is our biggest funding source and that is in blue at the bottom of the slide. And the tax levy funds almost ninety percent of our budget. But we do receive revenues and we do have other funding sources. Um, our next biggest revenue is really state aid. So on the slide, it looks as though state aid is going up by twenty-two point eight percent, but it really isn't going up. It's actually staying flat. Um, for the current year, the district was very conservative and they budgeted twenty percent less than state aid than what was actually on the state aid runs because we kept hearing from the state that they were going to reduce our state aid by twenty percent. So the district last year decided to take a very conservative approach and budget for twenty percent less state aid. So we have just recently heard from the state that, that twenty percent reduction is being restored, which is wonderful. And that's really going to help us this year. And it's going to also help us fund part of next year's budget by having additional surplus funds at the end of the year. So um, state aid is not being increased. Right now, we are just including the restoration of the state aid and we are projecting that state aid remains flat. We're not going to know what our final state aid numbers are until April first, when the legislative budget comes out. So at that point, state aid may increase or decrease and then this slide will change. Um, other big changes on the slide are non-resident tuition. We went through our non-resident tuition. Um, historical, uh, and number of students that we currently have enrolled and we felt that we could increase our non-resident tuition um, revenue for next year. And we'll go into that into more detail later on. Um, charges for shared services is really the transportation, um, shared services that we have with other districts. And we're basically keeping that flat. We're trying, we're going to increase it by just fourteen thousand dollars for now. And that also may change moving forward. Um, and the biggest change really is appropriated fund balance. So for the current year, um, the district is, was appropriating almost one point six million dollars worth of fund balance. And right now, we're trying to bring that down next year and we're trying to bring that down to a million dollars just because um, it is really tough to um, estimate, because appropriated fund balance is really surplus that you are generating in your current year that you are going to appropriate and fund next year's budget. So if you don't have that surplus in the current year, then you're basically tapping into your savings and you're tapping into your four percent um, contingency funds. And right now, our four percent contingency funds is just one point seven million dollars. And that's really the only money we would be able to tap into because it's the only money that's not earmarked for any other expenses. So um, we're really trying to bring this down by five hundred ninety-one thousand and um, moving forward, you'll see on the bottom that our budget, there's a budget-to-budget increase of one point two two percent. And um, the budget would be going up by five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars roughly. Uh, just to bring your attention, on January twenty-fifth, which is our last budget meeting, um, we did present all of our salaries and employee benefits and we were projecting an increase of four hundred and fifteen thousand in just that area alone. So that leaves us really with a balance of a hundred and twenty-four thousand for all the other increases. Um, unless we start decreasing other things in the budget, which we definitely will going forward. So this is our property tax levy limit calculation. And you can see how we came up with that one point five one percent. Um, many of these items, uh, there are different factors that we pull from different places, but most of them are set in stone at this point. So we are able to, our allowable tax levy increase of one point five um, zero nine one, we're hoping to go out with a levy of one point five percent, which is just under our allowable levy by three thousand, six hundred dollars. So this is um, a little more information about our non-resident tuition revenue. And this is one of the reasons why we were able, we felt comfortable with increasing our budget this year for that. So if you go back and you look, this is some historical information going back to eighteen nineteen. And it shows exactly um, how much tuition we budgeted each year and how much we actually collected. So in eighteen nineteen, we had roughly fifty students coming in that were parentally placed from Wayne Scott or Sagaponix School Districts. And we budgeted um, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand and we came in, uh, revenue came in that year of roughly nine hundred eighty-two thousand. So we had a surplus that year. The next year, um, the budget was increased significantly to over a million dollars. And total tuition received was only nine hundred and seventy thousand. So we actually had, um, we didn't recognize all the revenue that year. So um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one for the current year, we brought that revenue budget all the way down to eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. And this year, we're actually projecting to receive one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand. So we are projecting a surplus for the current year based on the number of students that we are, um, and that are enrolled. And most of those students are students coming from the Wayne Scott School District and the Sagaponix School District. So we do have, um, you know, twelve more students this year from Wayne Scott. We have four more students from Sagaponix and um, we are projecting uh, that increase. So next year, we really feel comfortable uh, increasing the budget to a million dollars because we're projecting that if those students stay with us, of course, the pre-K students, um, we didn't protect them moving forward because they would go back to their own districts. And of course, anyone in twelfth grade, we didn't protect. But if everyone else stayed in the school district, we feel that the million dollars is um, a safe number to go with for next year. And the bottom of the slide just includes um, our tuition rates. And it, uh, at our next meeting, we'll probably um, include our tuition rates on the agenda for approval either March or the first April meeting. And you could see that New York State um, actually they actually calculated tuition rate for us that we can use to. they actually calculated tuition rate for us that we can use to build other school districts for our services. And the New York State approved tuition rate is significantly higher than the board approved tuition rate that we have been using. Historically, the board's been approving a tuition rate increase of two and a half percent each year. So we will have to discuss whether or not that two, two and a half percent seems reasonable or if the board would like to actually increase that tuition rate. But you cannot exceed the New York State approved tuition rate. Shared transportation services, this is our revenue that comes in from shared transportation. We share transportation with Sagaponic, Wayne Scott and Bridgehampton. For the current year, we're projecting five, we have 528,164 dollars worth of intermunicipal agreements already approved. And these, this money really does offset our transportation costs, and it does help build up, or has helped build up our transportation fleet capital reserve, which is currently at 2.9 million. You could see in the middle of the slide, we included what our revenue budget is and how much revenue we've actually been receiving. So we have been receiving more revenue than we have budgeted. Next year, we are keeping the amount budgeted relatively flat. That is in typo, actually. I have a near 21, 22 budget projected for 35, 645. But we're actually projecting that to be 450. So that's going to go up to 450,000. And then on the bottom of the slide, you could actually see how much of that money is funding our transportation expenses overall. So in the 1819 school year, we had roughly 28% of our total transportation budget supported by these IMAs. 1920, that went up to 35%. And in 20, the current year, we're projecting 32, a little above 32% based on what we have budgeted for this year. But because our expenditures right now are so much lower than what we actually budgeted, that 32% is probably going to be significantly higher. And the reason why our transportation expenditures this year are so much lower than budget is just because of all the pandemic and how the pandemic has affected transportation. Because we're not doing field trips, we're not transporting for athletics. So our, that's why our transportation budget is so much less this year than budget. This is a summary of our district office and business office expenses. So on the bottom of every slide, you're going to see a couple of bullet points. And the bullet points are just telling everybody that our salaries and benefits budgets are not included in any of these lines because we already presented those on January 25th. BOSI's costs are also not presented because BOSI's costs are not going to be presented until March 1st. And really what we're presenting tonight are everything else. So all of our equipment costs, materials and supplies and contractual costs. So you can see that for district office and business office, we are relatively staying flat. So we are showing a 5,490 dollar increase, which is less than 1%. We basically went out and told all the administrators that we really wanted them to work very hard to stay within their budget and to not increase it for any, you know, for any reasons unless, unless they really needed to. So we're going to move on to the transportation proposed budget for next year. And this is also staying flat. So you can see that overall, not including salaries and benefits, we have a 990 dollar increase in our transportation budget. This is basically, this would actually decrease if, for instance, we didn't approve one of our IMAs for next year, our shared services agreements with other districts. We would also take the cost out of this side of the budget. The next budget we're going to go through is the technology budget. And the technology budget is only increasing slightly overall. So we have a budget-to-budget difference of 15,880, which is a 2.5% increase. Most of this increase is basically, we had some software that we didn't have to renew, but we also had to add software that we did have to renew because of COVID-related expenses such as health screening apps and things like that. We were able to decrease our equipment budget because we are actually going to be preparing to start our Smart Schools Bond next year. So we are going to try to purchase some of our equipment through our Smart Schools Bond, which right now we're allocated a little over 171,000. So I'm going to be working with Mr. Fisher on getting that up and going. So the next slide actually includes a detail of all the trans, the technology differences, the increases and the decreases to reconcile to the 15,880. And I'm not going to have Mr. Fisher go through each line tonight, just because we're going to try to get this moving along. But if you have any questions moving forward as to why things were not renewed or why things were added, we could always present that at a later meeting because we do have five other budget presentations to go through after, after today. Facilities. So this is our facilities budget. Facilities have broken down into two areas. It's operation of plant and maintenance of plant. And both areas are increasing very slightly. And I think, just like Mr. Fisher, Mr. Wilkin worked very hard on keeping his budget, you know, keeping a very low budget increase from year to year. And I think my biggest question to Mr. Wilkin was, where are we accounting for COVID costs? And he went through his spending and he, we realized that all of the big ticket items such as the air purifiers, the electric static sprayers, the barriers, toilet seats, paper towels, dispensers, they were already purchased already. So really for next year, we would just be purchasing some PPE. We'd be purchasing some filters. And Mr. Wilkin felt that we could absorb those costs in his current supply budget. So there, so there's some items increasing, decreasing, but overall, on the operations side, we're showing a 19,500 dollar increase overall. For the maintenance of plant budget, we're showing an even smaller increase. The only thing that's increasing is his ground supply budget by 2,500. And that's less than a 1% increase to maintenance budget. And this slide also shows overall, the facilities budget is increasing by 1.822% or 22,000. And you could see on the bottom of the slide, this is everything that reconciles to that 22,000 difference. I highlighted in yellow some of the things that are changing or some, so his equipment budget. So the current year, he has a 32-foot scissor lift budgeted. Next year, we don't need another scissor lift, but we do need a parking lot sweeper, and we do need some money set aside for if things do break down. And then there are some other increases and decreases throughout, but overall, the budget-to-budget difference is 22,000. So next meeting, we are going to go through the whole rest of the budget. So the next meeting we have scheduled is for March 1st. And we have our tax levy limit that we're going to talk about again because we wanted to see if there's any changes made to it, which right now I don't foresee any changes. But we're also going to talk about the tax levy impact and how that tax levy is going to impact our, our taxpayers. And what kind of incre, what kind of increase on their tax bill they can project to see. We're going to go through the full elementary school budget, the middle and high school budget. We're going to talk about athletics, special ed and BOSI's. And then we have a meeting on March 15th, where we go, we're going to review everything and we're going to review changes that have been made in to any previous presentations or any previous budgets, just because new information keeps coming in every day. For instance, the last presentation I did on tires and benefits, I used 10% to project our TRS cost. Since then, I've received information that our ERS cost, or I'm sorry, our TRS costs are only increasing by 9.8%. So we'll make a change for that. We also have slight salary changes that we're going to be making for the next presentation, and we'll go through all of those on March 15th. April 12th, we're going to have the same process. We're going to review the whole budget, and we're going to go through any changes that have to be, that have to be made based on additional information received. And then on April 20th, the board is going to be asked to adopt the budget and the property tax report card. So after April 20th, no changes can be made to the budget, but we are going to still be presenting everything to the community and to the taxpayers. And also on May 10th, we're also going to have our budget hearing, which is going to be presenting the budget to, to taxpayers again. And the budget hearing is going to include a presentation on our contingency budget. So if in fact, our budget is not approved and we have to go on contingency, we're going to explain what that's going to look at, look like for next year. But faced with the 1.5% tax levy increase, this is the lowest increase we've had in seven years. So right now, the budget is really tight and we're trying to do the best we can to stay within those limits. If, if in fact, we have any spikes on anything on our expenditure side, we may actually have to increase our appropriated fund balance, and we'll be going through that in our next meetings. So does anybody have any questions? I really went through that quickly.
You did. Let us just
Do you want to go back?
No, no, hold on, hold on. Board questions. It was very
I could go back to some of the
So just with with the savings and transportation, we can carry that forward to next year, correct?
Yes. So basically, any savings that you see, like for instance, on this non-resident tuition slide, you'll see that for the current year, we're projecting a surplus of 421. And then you see for the transportation, we're, we're projecting the surplus here of 92. So all of that surplus is actually going to be included in the appropriated fund balance that we're going to support, use to support next year's budget. So this 1 million dollars that we have in here of appropriated fund balance, all of that would be part of that.
So that's the carry forward. That's where we
Yes, that's the carry forward of the surplus.
And what are we basing our number? I know we have a, just walk us through again the tuition in numbers, how that changed from year to year and how, what we're using to anticipate that going forward in the COVID year, not knowing, you know, if we can accept new or if we run into a similar situation as this year.
Yep. So you can see how the students have been changed, the number of students we received from Wayne Scott and Sagaponic have changed throughout the years. Our parentally placed students actually went down. So we had for 1920, we had 17 students parentally placed for 20, for the current year, we have 13. But if you look at Wayne Scott, we had 23 last year and the current year we have 35. So overall, our total number of students were, last year, we had enrolled 45 that were parentally placed from other districts, and this year we have 57. Next year, we're going to project 51. And we feel that right now 51 is a safe number. And that's why we're going to increase our revenue budget. It's going to go from 821,945 up to the million dollars. As, and of course
And that presupposes we don't change tuition or we do it by two and a half percent only?
Yes. If we change tuition by two and a half percent, that's what we're projecting, the 1,179. If we go higher, of course, that number would go up.
Thank you.
Jennifer Chiaros, just to add on this slide again about no resident tuition. So I see Wayne Scott, there's a big jump from 23 to 35. Is that a reason that maybe like, you know, some of these kids are, you know, New York City kids that they came, you know, they live in Wayne Scott, and they came to us for this year, but next year, like, you know, they're going back. I mean, do we have more information on that or do we think that number is sustainable?
That could be the case. We don't have all the information. That's why I said these are all preliminary numbers. And we are delving deep into all of these numbers, and we are going to have more information at the, for the next presentation when we go through revenue. So right now, we feel that all the students that we currently have, all the 12th graders, of course, we, we took out of our projection. And then all of the pre-K students we took out of our projection because the pre-K students going into first grade would return back to Wayne Scott and Sagaponic. So this 31 students we're projecting for next year. At this point in time, I feel it's a reasonable number, but like I said, we are delving deep. And if that number has to go down because we have additional information about, these are some people who are returning back to the city, then we're going to reduce that.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one more question, and maybe that's more a question for Jeff. So for the parentally placed students, so I see there is a drop. We were supposed to be doing an investigation about all the new students that register at the school, whether they're really like staying in the district, they're living in the district, or they're just, you know, scamming the system. So have we done that investigation? Is it something like, you know, that could potentially alter those numbers?
Yeah, let me, let me speak to your, your first question, then I'll address your second question. The first question with regard to tuition numbers for next year, bear in mind that we, we did not accept this year additional tuition payers at the elementary school because of the space restrictions related to COVID. So come September, there are a lot of unknowns. Come September, if we are back to full enrollment and not limited by social distancing guidelines, we very well could accept more at the elementary if, if there are people interested. The second question, I'm going to report out to the board at the next board meeting on the status of the on the residency checks. If you recall, what we did is we asked the person we hired to do this to check all new registrations this year, and that has been completed. So we now have an update and I'll send it to the board and then report publicly on it on March 1st.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Board questions.
Sorry. And it may be too preliminary to know, but this is the first year that we're operating with students and staff in the SAC Harbor Learning Center. And I, I was just curious if our operational costs of that building are turning out to be more or less are the same than we had kind of budgeted and guessed. Taking the cost of the personnel outside, just the operational cost of the plant.
Well, if you look at the operation of plant proposed budget, we do break it out per building. So overall, I mean, the, the increase is very small and overall, the increase is really coming from utilities. So we did increase, you know, Paul did a great job in going through all his utility lines. And we did have an increase in some of the utilities at F, at the other buildings, actually. So we, we decreased some of the gas and fuel in one building, and we had to increase it in another building. So if you just look overall, the budgets, because of the, the learning center being fully operational this year, they're really not going up at all. They're really staying flat. So it's not having a big impact. And all of the staffing, the full salary budget is really staying flat. So it's really not having an impact for next year.
And it's coming in
Might have had an impact for this year because this year was the first year that it was budgeted. But the, the cost already included in the budget, so it's not having an impact for next year.
No, my que, I'm sorry, I was unclear, I think. My question was, are our actual costs coming in and close to what we had actually forecasted for this year's cost to be?
Well, I believe the salary budget is coming in. If you take into account the additional salaries that we had to move to Learning Center just because the kindergarten is now in the dish, in the building. And then an analysis of all of the other costs, I probably can do that for your next meeting. I could see exactly what was budgeted for the Learning Center and what's been actually spent. But this is really just such an, it's really not your usual year in any respect. So it is going to be hard to take those numbers and project them forward.
Do you know what? I'm not requesting that. I think there's so much on your plate right now focusing on the budget for this year is the priority. But after the year is over, it might be interesting just to take a look at what the actual cost for, which, which was forecasted. That's all. Because then it kind of gives us a good, it gives us some good information going forward about forecasting. That was it.
And I add a little into that. I, what, what I need to do is figure out after a whole full school year, then I'll be able to look at the utility bills, and then, then we can adjust our budget in the future to reflect whatever we're actually spending. But I do, what I do want to say though, is that because of COVID, our utility bills and all the buildings are going to be a little bit higher this year than usual because of what I've been noticing is that a, a most of the classrooms, everybody's leaving their windows open. So they, our heating bills are probably going to be a lot higher this year than, than a usual winter. So I just wanted to point that out. But we really do need a full year at the Learning Center to kind of get an idea where we're going to be. And then I can adjust the budget from, you know, every year after that.
Yeah, so it could be a presentation in the summer sometime.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other board questions? Other board questions? Okay. Great. Thank you so much, Jennifer. We look forward to the next presentation and, and working toward building our budget.
Yes. And please, if you have any other questions after you review everything, just you can email them to me also, and I'll know to add that into the next presentation.
Great. And you, if for the public that's still watching, if you could just outline the, just the next few dates again in summary for the budget presentation so that anyone watching can log in.
Yes. So March 1st, we're going to be presenting really the elementary school budgets, the middle high school budgets, athletics, special ed and BOSI. So it's a big meeting. It's a lot of information. And then after that, the next two meetings on March 15th and April 12th are going to just are going to just focus on changes that we've made already to, to the budget that we've presented. So we're also going to have all the information put online. So after March 1st, we should be able to put, be able to put a line-by-line budget up on the website so that people can start looking at it and people can actually participate if they want to during the March 15th meeting and the April 12th meeting to ask any questions that they might have. So we'll present, we'll put this presentation up on the website tomorrow. March 1st, we'll put another presentation up online and we'll probably, at that point, be able to put up a line-by-line.
Great.
Website also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to item 7.1, under policy action. Is there a motion to approve second reading and adopt new policy 5670 records management?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, Mary, please open up the voting.
That's unanimous.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda items, is there a motion for consent agenda items 8.2 through 8.12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mary, any discussion? No discussion? Okay, Mary, please open up the voting.
That's unanimous.
Great, thank you. Item 10.1, committee reports on the agenda. Is there an update, if there is, on the diversity and inclusion committee at this point that someone would like to share? If not, we can put that over to the March 1 meeting.
I do have some.
Great.
There. Sure. We had a meeting today, this afternoon, we had a meeting. And the core of the meeting was really to go over the kind of work that the subcommittees have been doing. So just to provide a little bit of an overview on that, the professional development subcommittee is currently researching organizations that are going to offer PD, that will offer PD to faculty and hopefully students as well. Classroom libraries met and we are looking to pursue an extension on the book survey distribution now to middle, high school, hopefully with the support of Ms. Carrie Arrow, allowing us to distribute a survey to the middle school teachers regarding them sharing anonymously areas and subjects that they felt their class book selections might be lacking. Also mentioned was made of producing a list of important books to read or films to watch before graduating high school. The list is something that we hope can be put on our school website. Tough topics met to discuss the collaboration that we have with John Germain Library. The meeting was focused on how to get important tough topics to our school and community in the past. We used to meet at John Germain Library, but obviously now because of COVID, we're not able to meet under their venue. The issue that came up with that is regarding licenses and rights and how we might be allowed to show films now under this new, this new form with COVID. But with virtual access, we were thinking maybe with online viewing, maybe TED Talks or other professional development organizations that offer viewings on tough topics. That's something we're thinking about. Student Subcommittee has met and they're talking about ways to collaborate with other student organizations that share common language. For example, Student Council, LGBTQ, the Asian Club, student representatives that have common themes in terms of conversation that they have. The student representative that was with us this afternoon at the meeting again mentioned Juneteenth and also the importance of updating curriculum so that it's relevant to today and things that are important and ongoing in history right now. Conversation was had regarding Black History Month. Mention was made and I'm, I'm kind of just summarizing what the person said regarding how often one might have to hear about Harriet Tubman throughout the course of her academic career. And it's not negating the importance of someone like Harriet Tubman, but more like a conversation on who our new leaders are and if conversation could be had regarding that and updating curriculum accordingly. And then last, we talked about goals moving forward and the importance of ongoing professional development for training with teachers, lead teachers, going over curriculum and content, dialoguing with all three buildings. So for example, the English Department Middle High School is meeting with the elementary school teachers as far as books that they're reading to their students and the books that are shared. And then how curriculum is covered regarding diversity and inclusion. That is an overview of what's happened with diversity and inclusion the last couple of weeks.
You guys are very busy, very busy on that. Which is great and, and I know we spoke last, Ms. Renoso, that you're still potentially looking for a donor or fundraising for books, we were talking about books, is that still the case?
Yes, that is correct. That is our hope for books to later be purchased for middle and high school students. But with that, what we're looking for is for the school to eventually meet or match what is donated. So this is a good gesture from a local community member. But that person also wants to know how the school is going to do their part when the funding ends.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, any board members have questions for Ms. Renoso? Okay, great job, thank you. Items, I would have on items 10.2, 10.3, and 10.4, those committees are meeting on the 10th and the 11th respectively. So is there a motion to adjourn those to our March 1 meeting for an update after their next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Great, Mary, if we can open up the voting on that?
I don't have that listed as.
We can take it, I, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Great. We are now on to item 12.1, public input number two. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to share something with the board, ask a question? Now would be the time to do it under public input number two. I would ask that you raise your hand or put your question into the chat box at this time. Mr. Fisher. Are there any hands?
Yes, we have one, we have Larry Balt, hold on one second, Larry. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Larry.
Hey, how are you guys?
Good, how are you? Just state your name, please, Larry, and then you have three minutes.
Larry Balt is my name.
Thank you.
And I apologize for coming so late and I have a feeling I missed a lot of public input one. But I wanted to just say that I thought you guys are doing a really great job managing our school's response to the pandemic. And I wanted to encourage you to keep up that science-based approach that you've had. I think it's been pretty successful. I know that the kids are missing out on a lot of stuff and there's a lot of pressure to open up for new activities. But I feel as though it's important that the school be cognizant, and I think you guys all are, that community spread is, is important as well as just the spread amongst the students and the staff. And I think that part of keeping community spread low, especially as these new variants come into play, is to keep our kids as free as possible and their families and the rest of the community. So that's really all I wanted to say, just thank you and really appreciate the science-based approach.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that, Larry.
You're welcome. No one else?
Okay. With that, item 13.1, is there a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing, discuss the employment of a particular person?
Brian, before we do that, can I just make a comment for the record?
Absolutely.
Mr. Nikko cited something from the CDC earlier in the meeting and I think someone made a comment suggesting it was an op-ed. I just wanted to note that I read that same article. It is in the CDC weekly report and it's published by the CDC on their website. It's not an op-ed, so I just wanted to note that.
Great. I should have asked if there were any comments from, or anything the board wanted to say before I made that motion. Is there anything else before I ask for that motion?
Yes, just a quick question for the superintendent. I believe that the next meeting we have is not for three weeks because of the winter break, is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm just throwing out there that considering that it seems like at every meeting we're continuing to hire personnel just because of the COVID circumstances we're in, that if there's an anticipation in the next three weeks of needing to hire the people, that perhaps there might want to be a tentative date for a very brief meeting just to approve personnel.
We could do that, but I think, I think we approved in the past, and I could be incorrect, so correct me if I'm wrong, that we can hire certain personnel and then you guys can approve, you guys being the Board of Education can approve retroactively.
Okay. We're just giving you an opportunity.
No, no, I appreciate it, thanks.
Great, and it was a good idea, Chris, thank you. Let us know if you need that, Jeff. If there's nothing else, then I would have that, that motion, is there a motion for that purpose?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mary, please open up the voting. And while we're voting for the people watching this, if the motion does carry, the board will go into executive session, at the conclusion of which, we will come out of executive session for the sole purpose of ending the public meeting. The board will not take any action at the end of that so that you didn't have to wait to see the meeting, the material of the meeting is concluded with the exception of closing it, should this motion carry.
That's unanimous.
Okay, great. So board members and invited administrators, there's a link in your now box for the executive session. So I ask that you log off of this and into the executive meeting. Everyone else, have a good evening. Mary, that motion, well, you have it because it voted, was made and carried at 9:15.
Yes, thank you so much.
Very good, thank you.
Night.